Well, good evening, everyone. It's 5:30, so we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. We'll begin with the invocation. Andrew, if you'd be so kind.
God, we'd like to ask for your guidance and wisdom as we continue to make decisions this evening for the betterment of our community for today, tomorrow, and generations to come. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Here.
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 Here. All right. A current copy of the Open Meetings Act of Nebraska is posted on the wall at the back of the council chambers. The consent agenda, all matters under consent agenda are considered by the city council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. Any city council member may, however, remove an item from consent by request. But before we get into the consent agenda, I have some exciting information here to provide you. Oh, and if I may, I'd like to talk about the meeting procedure as well. I kind of zipped right on by that. And for those who haven't, well, it looks to me like everybody's been here before. So, but I'm going to tell you anyway. I don't see any new faces. Meeting procedure, a public may address a specific agenda items at the pleasure of the mayor. If recognized by the mayor, please identify yourself by stating your name and address and limit remarks to three minutes or less. Out of respect to the city employees, we request that any complaints or criticisms of employees not be aired in a public meeting. Concerns about employees should be brought to the attention of the city administrator or mayor and individual violation will be declared out of order. Okay, now, we've got some exciting stuff here because before we get started on our agenda, I have an award to give out. Doug, can you, where are you, can you come forward just real quick and I'll read this stuff off? Yeah, you can bring your staff with you. Lane, you're certainly welcome as well. All right. Okay, the City of North Platte wastewater treatment facility has a long history of outstanding safety and safety training. Since 2005, the facility and its staff have amassed three platinum awards, two golds, two silver, and two bronze awards. The past year has been no exception. Once again, Doug Meyer, wastewater superintendent and the staff of the wastewater treatment facility are recognized for their commitment to safety and excellence. It is my pleasure on behalf of the Nebraska Water Environment Association to award the North Platte wastewater treatment facility the safety, the Silver Safety Award for excellence in an accident prevention and safety program that includes training, materials, and participation of all employees. A big congratulation to the entire staff of the wastewater treatment facility and to your dedication for safety and excellence. And I just happen to have this really cool looking, I'll bring it up here. If you gentlemen don't mind, why don't you step up here and mute your programs.
I'll have to get your specific IDs in a moment.
Yeah.
Do your thing first.
Doug, this says Silver Safety Award presented by North Platte wastewater treatment facility for excellence in an accident prevention and safety program that includes training materials and a participation of all employees. So, congratulations to each of you. Not sure who wants to hang on to that. Yeah.
Now, if I may, before you break your formation, starting from the mayor's immediate left, who are?
I'm Eric, and my last name is Carr.
F-A-R-R-I-T-O-R, and what's your title there?
I'm an operator.
Okay, and then you are?
Sam.
Brett.
You have a name?
Yeah.
Your title?
I'm Ed.
And then?
That was my, I mean, why do you go?
And you are the superintendent. I'm sure I got that right. Thank you, gentlemen.
You know, Dwight, I'd just like to say while you're going back up there, I went out and toured that wastewater treatment plant, and no kidding, you could eat off the floor. It's that clean in there. They do a wonderful job out there.
Yes, indeed. They're amazing, amazing people. Absolutely. Thank you for that comment. Appreciate it. All right. Let me turn a page here. All right, consent agenda. Item number one. I better make sure that I read this. I'm not, I think I read this, but I'll do it again. Did I read this? Okay. Item number one approved minutes of October 6, 2020. And item number two approved application by Fat Dogs North Platte for a special designated license on November 20, 2020 from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. with the alternate date of November 21, 2020 from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. at Fat Dogs North Platte at 102 Holiday Frontage Road for a tasting event.
Either we approve items one through two of the consent agenda.
Second.
And that motion passes. All right, before we get involved in our regular agenda, I'm going to ask for a motion to move into closed session to discuss personnel or potential litigation. So, I'm sorry, go ahead. Go ahead, Andrew.
Hold on, Andrew.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, I'd, yeah, I'd move that we go into closed session in the interest, in the public interest to discuss real estate purchases.
Second.
Okay. We'll need to take a roll call on that. There we go.
Did you vote?
Lawrence and Jim.
Aye.
Oh, no, we got, they have it up on the board. If you want to hit your aye button.
Will I hit my button?
Yes, please. Okay, all right, here we go. That motion passes, and so we'll go into closed session. Thank you, folks. We'll get through this as quickly as we can.
Mayor Livingston.
Thank you all for your patience. Yep, fire us up. Okay, let us know.
Didn't touch them.
They timed the light off.
Um.
I think it was wall light.
Their LGs are Korean, they don't want to be Chinese.
This is on. Bless.
We didn't touch anything.
What do I do now?
Free.
Free.
Uh, this one's coming on.
Okay, that one's on.
Got two on.
That's on. Hi, back there, yes.
Good.
Are you on here?
Yeah.
They'll run off.
I won't, I won't, I'm right here.
You're right where? Okay, we came out of closed session at six twenty PM. We'll go ahead and start with our regular agenda, which is item number three, and that is to authorize the city administration to negotiate the leasing terms for the Iron Eagle Golf Course in North Plattling County, Nebraska.
I move to authorize administration to negotiate leasing terms with CNL Land LLC.
Just ask a couple of questions.
Sure.
In the, in the proposal, they, they talk about really a focus on master planning, and I read it as them kind of raising their hand saying, hey, we're willing to lead a master planning effort. And, so are they planning to, I mean, are they planning to lease the property during that process, or do you see a planning process first, and maybe walk us through how you, how you think this is going to unfold and what they're going to be doing?
Sure. Councilman Lucas, a couple of, I'd point to page twenty where they have a pictorial that outlines what is a preliminary, in my mind, a very, very preliminary master plan for the site. In discussions with both, with Chief Development, they, they have a vision for what the, how the area would be developed. They didn't outline that in here when we were specifically asking them if they would be, as a proposer, interested in taking over the golf course. So, I'm not answering your question perfectly directly, but I believe they do have a vision, and the vision, in my mind, would be laid out through the lease process. But the plan is, as I understand it, in conversations with Chief, is to enter into the lease with the master plan being the end result.
Okay, so what we're looking to do tonight is to authorize you to just keep these discussions going, because it, it reads as if they're saying, hey, we're, we want to, we want to work on a community plan for this, for this, for this proposal, because it, it, it talked about the potential for a lease or whatnot. So I was just, I was just trying to understand actually what they were going to do, and it sounds like you guys are going to work on figuring that out. Is that the next step?
That, that's the next step, yes, is to, there, there are several terms and several conversations I've had with community members, councilmen, who have expressed concerns about what they want as terms, or things to think about as terms in the lease agreement. What I'm asking for is the ability to start those discussions with the developer.
Thank you.
And that motion passes. Uh, we should, wait, we're missing, I believe we're missing some.
I didn't know he was here, and I hit the button before.
Are you here, Jim?
Here.
That would be a yes.
He wasn't here at roll call, so.
Okay. Well, if you could add him in there. All right, thank you. All right, item number four, authorize the approval of an agreement between Leathers Inc. and the City of North Platte for a community build playground, plan for Centennial Park, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
I move to authorize the approval of an agreement between Leathers Inc. and the City of North Platte for a community build playground, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
Mayor Livingston?
Yes. We have two folks in the crowd, and one young lady that would, if you guys would allow it, and one young man, sorry I missed that, allow it to give them some time to provide you a little presentation on this suggested playground. If you, if you would be so kind to give us your name and your address, please?
I am Ronan Cole, and I live at eleven twenty Sheridan Court. I want to speak in favor of the community build playground. I think we need a new playground, because we only have one new playground in town. Kids are not as active these days. There are a lot of kids that brag in class that they have played video games for twenty-four hours, so the playground will give them a reason to play outside. I like that kids will help design this playground, because we are the ones who... We are the ones who actually play on the playground, and kids are the ones who know how other kids will react to stuff. If kids design it, they will want to play on it, too. I really liked a playground in Mason City, Iowa, where I lived with my family. I liked the playground because it was realistic. They had a whole train you could play on, you could climb on, bridges, a fort, there was an obstacle course, I could climb around and stuff, and climbing is fun. When you just climb up and go down a side, it's not as satisfying, but when there are a lot of things to climb on, it's really fun. This playground I liked in Mason City was built by the same company that would help us in North Platte with our community build. As a businessman, I plan to donate part of my giving money to this playground. I hope the other small business owners and kids in North Platte do the same. I think a new park would be a really cool thing. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening.
That's awesome, thank you, but can, can you wait just? I have to apologize, I did not catch your name, young man.
I'm Ronan Cole. Ronan?
Roman?
Cole, Ronan.
Ronan, R-O-N-A-N?
R-O-N-A-N, and then Cole is C-O-L-E.
Okay, thank you. And Ronan's address again?
Eleven twenty Sheridan Court.
Thank you. Yes, young lady, if you'd be so kind to give us your name and address?
Hello, my name is Aubrey Morris, and I live at three six zero zero Meadowlark Lane. I agree with what Ronan had, with what Ronan shared. I have had the opportunity to play at, play on several Leathers Park's playgrounds, and I really think it would be great if we could build one here in North Platte. Two things I loved about the leather playgrounds I played on, that they are safe, and the way they are designed to help my sisters and I have so much fun. Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much.
Uh, my name is Emily Whirl, and I live at thirteen oh seven William Avenue.
And I'm Toni Morris, and I'm at thirty-six, I said it like she did, three six zero zero Meadowlark Lane.
So, first of all, we just want to thank you for the opportunity to share a little bit about what our project and what we want to do. We're so excited to be at this point, to be in front of you all, and hope to go and do big things from here, so.
This has kind of been a long-term dream. It, for, for us, it started in July of 2019, I visited a playground in Wyoming with my family, and I, the kids were playing, and I was like, this is a great playground, and I took videos, and I took pictures, and I said, Emily, we need this in North Platte. And, um, so I wrote down the name of the company, and it happened to be a Leathers Playground, and we didn't know at the time what their model was, we just knew that they had some neat stuff on their website, and we really liked it. But as we started looking at it a little bit more, we realized they offered, one of their main things they offer is a community build model, and we just think that would be such a big win for North Platte. I guess, I mean, do we need to talk about, yeah, what it's like?
So the community build offers the opportunity for us it to be designed by the community, and then built by the community, so we want everyone to come, bring their hammers, bring their tools, and actually put this playground together, which we hope will be September of 2021, would be our goal. So, we love the idea of building community through a community build playground. That is really important to us, to see that happen.
And the fact that the community itself can take ownership of it, and just have something they can take pride in, that, that's a win for us, we feel like it would just be a great opportunity, so, yeah.
So why now? A lot of our playgrounds are going to need updated, built in the late eighties, early nineties, Centennial Park is one of those. It's not up to ADA standards, we will be able to bring that, not only by poured-in-place rubber, which we are committed to, and then also just updated equipment that is more accessible for more kids. As far as fundraising, we hope to have lots of different people help donate to this project, but we will also be working with different businesses in the community, asking for funds, we'll be applying for grants, which we actually are on the brink of doing. And we, in fact, have, the Parks, Rec, and Wellness Committee has already accepted the responsibility for the first two fees that you see on the list, they'll be taking care of those for us, so we're super excited to be off on the right foot so far. One of the other cool things is, businesses will actually be able to sponsor components of the playground, so say we have a really awesome climbing wall, we'll be approaching, maybe businesses or entities, and just asking them, hey, you can have this climbing wall for X amount of dollars, and then we'll put their names on it, so. And also picket sales, so we'll have pickets in the fence, and if you want, you can have your name imprinted on those, and we'll be selling those to fundraise. You could have your dog's name.
Anyone, whoever, it doesn't matter.
So. So we know one of the questions that's come up is what happens if we don't raise the needed funds, and we understand it maybe does look a little daunting, but we are committed to making that happen. If that's not done in the timeframe of September twenty-one that allows for that, we really want to keep fundraising until we reach that goal, because we want to have a, a playground that is, is awesome.
Yeah.
So, yeah. So far, we've worked with Mid-Nebraska Community Foundation, they're helping us with fundraising. Kids Club with North Public Schools is very excited, because they have, they want to promote civic responsibility with those kids, and apparently that's an important thing they're focusing on this year. Park Rec, Rec, and Wellness Committee, as well as Linda Thompson, who's been in front of you with the Kiwanis Playground, she has been helping us as well, so.
Very knowledgeable.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
And that's, yeah, why can we help?
Do you start your, the community involvement in designing playgrounds? Would that happen after a certain point of fundraising, or are you going to start that right off the get-go?
We're starting.
Here we got it.
If we have approval, we want to start tomorrow.
Yeah.
We would love to launch the pre-design stage, and so we will have kids actually be drawing us their dream playgrounds, and then we'll also have a survey for the community, and we'll be asking people what they would like to see, as well, well as like historical elements that are important to our community, what would they possibly like to see as a theme for the playground, so, yeah.
Good question. Yeah, good question.
Awesome. Once the upgrades are installed, then I presume that that'll be, that'll be, excuse me, the city's property to maintain for the next thirty years, or twenty years, or?
That, that is kind of the thing, that's the benefit of working with Leathers, they use recycled plastic lumber, that's what their components are made out of, and ninety-nine point nine percent of the time is what they're saying, and it's long-lasting, environmentally friendly, and requires no maintenance, and it also comes with a fifty-year warranty. So, I mean, anything we put in place is going to be better than the maintenance on, on the playground that's there, and, I mean, you can't even get parts for what is there right now, so this should be a much better feature for maintenance. And, you know, another thing we've thought about is, ultimately, yes, we're asking the city to help maintain it, but the community is going to be so invested in this, I hope that we can have families volunteer monthly, you know, maybe one family takes on the park for a month, and just walks through, and kind of just cleans it up, and helps keep it fresh for, for people to enjoy, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you very, very much.
Thank you. And that motion passes. Thank you very much. Item number five, adopt ordinance number four zero four two, amending the North Platte Code of Ordinances, Chapter one fifty Building Regulations, Construction Section one five zero point zero nine four, and Chapter one fifty-six, Zoning Section one five six dot zero eight three, relating to footings and accessory uses, on second reading. Mayor Livingston, would you like me to read the ordinance? Yes, please. An ordinance of the City of North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska, amending Chapter one fifty Building Regulations, Construction Sections one fifty dot zero nine four, and Chapter one fifty-six zoning, Section one fifty-six dot zero eight three, relating to footings and accessory uses, repealing all ordinance or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for the effective date and publication thereof in Pam in pamphlet form.
I move to adopt ordinance number 4042, amending the North Platt City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 150 Building Regulations, Construction Section 150.094, and Chapter 156, zoning Section 156.083, relating to footings and accessory uses, on second reading.
Second.
I have a question. Matt, you and I talked about, it says, under 150.094, footings A, lowercase a, number one, no foundation of a building should be placed on fill material. I think you and I talked about having a stipulation in there, unless it's approved by a geotechnical engineer or an engineer. I don't see that in here. Dave, would you assist me? I believe that was the intent, so if we... 150.094 footings, A generally, number one. Well, I think it needs to be added, because, I mean, it's very common to do construction on fill.
And you want to put, and it's, I do think I have that wording.
Yes, we do.
We can get that changed if that's...
Well, I mean, if we leave it like this, we're, we're really hindering what, what's going to be built, because we would be building only on native material. And Brent, you understand, I think, what I'm trying to say here, so. Can we make an amendment to add that into the, and you have the wording, is that correct?
Um, I don't have it right in front of me, but I do.
Can it be dropped in on the third reading?
Could it be added to the third reading?
Yeah, we got one more reading. Nope. Okay, as I understand it, we can add this into the third reading? On fill material, unless approved by a geotechnical engineer, would be your amendment, if you were going to make one? Yeah, if you could amend it now, it would be the most appropriate. Okay. Okay, I probably would say no foundation of a building shall be placed on fill material unless approved by a registered or certified civil engineer. That should covers. Professional engineer. Professional engineer.
Putting professional engineer.
I think. Yeah, he'll change that. Professional engineer. Okay, professional engineer is fine with me.
Second.
So are we voting on the amendment? Yes. Okay. Everybody knows we're voting on the amendment, correct? Okay. And that passes. Okay. Done the main motion. Now back to the main motion, if we can vote on that as well. That passes as well. Thank you. Item number six, approve certificate of completion for paving District Number 833 on State Farm Road from Newberry to Willow Street within the city limits, and accept said improvements.
I move to have the council accept the certificate of completion for paving District Number 833.
Second.
And that motion passes. All right, item number seven, approve certificate of completion for paving District Number 834 on Charlie Evans Drive from 145 feet west to the west right-of-way of Buffalo Bill Avenue thence west, and then north to Scout's Rest Ranch Road, and accept said improvements.
I move to have the council accept the certificate of completion on paving District Number 834.
Second.
And that motion passes. Item number eight, approve collective bargaining agreement between the City of North Platt and North Platt Police Employees Association Fraternal Order of Police.
I move to approve collective bargaining agreement between the City of North Platt and North Platt Police Employees Association, Inc. Fraternal Order of Police Number 33 for the term of October 1st, 2020 through September 30th of 2022.
And that motion passes. Item number nine, adopt resolution approving claims and authorize the issuance of warrant to Paulson, Inc. in the amount of $504,026.50, and a warrant to ATC Group Services, LLC in the amount of $1,516.25 to pay approved claims and referring to and incorporating the terms and conditions of ordinance number 3874 relating to warrant financing passed and approved on May 21st of 2013.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance of two warrants as presented in the material.
Second.
Mayor, I'd like to abstain since Nebraska Land Bank's purchasing the warrant.
Sure, thank you. Motion passes, seven zero with one abstention. And item number 10, claims.
Move to repay the claims.
Dwight, on these claims, is that, that J bar J, is that for the month or for half a month, two weeks?
That's one month.
Oh, thank you, Lane. Thank you.
Thank God.
It's usually higher in August, September, October.
And if I didn't say so, that motion passed, I do believe. And now I would certainly entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, thank everyone. Life is good.